All right, good morning. We're going to get started with the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Ms. Maynard.
Thanks Chairman, and good morning Chairman and the rest of the Commissioners. Item number one is to conduct your first public comment period.
All right, good, this is the first time set aside for a public comment. Anyone wishing to provide a public comment with regards to an item on today's agenda, please step forward to the microphone, state your names, by your last name for the record, identify the item on which you are speaking, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period.
Thanks Chairman, the next slide Mr. To approve the agenda, it's in order and ready for your approval.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next agenda is to conduct the CE report, and today we're going to start with a recognition of our Deputy CEO Angela Castro. This week Angela was joining an elite group of women, she was recognized as a woman to watch, and there was, in my opinion, no one more deserving than that recognition, so just wanted to recognize Angela and all the things that she does and her commitment to the community. Great job Ange. Okay, so let's move on. Next, we'd like to recognize Trans Devs Maintenance Clerk Deborah Mitchell. To present this item, we have a video from Roger Johnson, who's our Director of Fleet Maintenance and Technical Equipment, so let's watch.
Thanks MJ. Today I'm honored to highlight Deborah Mitchell, a key member of Trans Devs Maintenance Team. As a maintenance clerk, she oversees 70 team members and helps ease administrative burdens so mechanics can focus on fleet maintenance. Deborah's dedication to uplifting each technician is truly inspiring. Most recently, Deborah took it upon herself to organize Trans Devs Maintenance Appreciation Day back in June, ensuring mechanics were recognized and celebrated during all three shifts. Deborah has also gone above and beyond by obtaining a commercial driver's license, which is not even required in her position, to manage bus collection and transfers and move dozens of vehicles each day to help the team. She also provides support for activities like ordering uniforms and tracking preventative maintenance for RTC's 400-plus fixed route buses. Deborah's leadership sets a standard of excellence, inspiring our maintenance team to deliver their best and foster a culture of appreciation. Let's surprise her with a Crystal Bus Award. Deborah, so happy we could catch up with you today. It's good to see you.
Good to see you too, I haven't seen you in a while.
Yes, it has been a bit, but I wanted to say I'm excited today to be able to stop by and say hello, and on behalf of the RTC Board and our CEO MJ Maynard, that I have the honor to present you with this Crystal Bus Award.
Oh, thank you.
This award is meant to be...
Thank you.
Yeah. This award is meant to be a symbol of appreciation of the impact that you have on your team. So I wanted to say congratulations and thank you for your teamwork, for your leadership, and for your dedication.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Well, I've been here for 17 years now, and I like what I do, and I love my team and my bosses. Thank you.
Is Deborah here? Thank you Deborah.
Deborah, wish she was here, so great job Deborah. So next, we would like to acknowledge Intercon Security Officer Idris Adewal-Adewala to present the special item, we have a video from Tom Adaberry, Director of Safety and Security Operations, so let's go ahead and watch.
Thanks MJ. Today I am privileged to spotlight an exceptional officer with Intercon Security. Transit Security Officer Idris Adewale demonstrated extraordinary courage and skill in response to a critical emergency at the BTC lobby. Officer Adewale found an unresponsive individual and immediately sprang into action. Realizing the individual had no detectable pulse, he used a defibrillator and successfully restarted the individual's heart. Las Vegas Fire and Rescue then took over and transported the individual for medical attention. Officer Adewale's quick thinking, calm demeanor, and heroic actions on that day serve as a powerful example of the professionalism and readiness that define our team at Intercon Security. Let's go recognize Officer Adewale with the Crystal Bus Award for his bravery and dedication. Mr. Adewale, how are you sir?
Doing so.
I have an award to present to you.
Oh really?
For a great job you've done.
Okay.
I want to present you with the Crystal Bus Award on behalf of the RTC Board of Commissioners and on behalf of our CEO MJ Maynard, I want to congratulate you and present you with the Crystal Bus Award. But what I want to tell you before I present you this is you did what was probably the most critical act any security officer could have done, and that's saving another person's life.
Thank you.
So fantastic job, we're very proud of you for your dedication and hard work, so thank you. So on behalf of RTC, a Crystal Bus Award.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Good job.
I'm very thankful, since another day at work, that was given opportunity by these guys there, they make sure I come in with time, do what's done, do what's necessary. I'm honored for the award, thank you very much.
Very good, is Idris here? There he is.
Now that is a rock star, Idris, thank you so much. All right, so next, we'd like to recognize RTC Superstars of the Quarter. This person dedicates their time and energy to ensuring that they are supporting and encouraging their teammates and going above and beyond in their department. This person has stepped up to assist a senior technician and contractors in preparing for NDOT's ramp meter controller updates throughout Southern Nevada, which will smooth traffic during peak travel times and benefit commuters using the freeway. Our first superstar of the quarter is Barry Blakely, Traffic Communications System Technician in Traffic Command and Center.
Stand up Barry.
I had a chance to spend time with the FAST team out in the field, and man, what they do is, it's hard work, it's good work, and they're behind the scenes, so you don't really recognize how much they impact how traffic moves in our city, so he's a great, great, great guy. Our second superstar of the quarter has been instrumental in coordinating their team's projects over the past year, including installing a new camera system fleetwide, outfitting paratransit vehicles in short notice to meet service demands, and installing nano-GPS-based panic buttons into all fixed route vehicles as an added layer of safety. They have demonstrated a very high level of thoroughness and accuracy with every task that is assigned to them and have ensured their team stays on track with these important projects. And our second superstar of the quarter is Mike Roseberry. Come on down Mike, come on down.
Mike here. Come on down both of you.
Come on down superstars of the quarter. I have to tell you that they, again, a little bit about Mike, Mike has been with us for a long time in the Fleet Department, he's not only very, very good at what he does, but he's, he could be part of the IT team, he's developed programs for us that today still, we still use, just great, great employees. Yay Team RTC, woo! Okay, so the start of the new Raiders season is already here, if you can believe it or not, the first game scheduled for, is for next Saturday, the 17th, that means the beginning of Game Day Express service. Last season, we provided almost 160,000 trips across 65 games for Raiders, Golden Knights, and UNLV football games. We would like to thank Clark County for their continued partnership in funding the popular service. So we have a video showing the impact that Game Day Express has on our community and the value it brings to our sports teams, businesses, and others, and if you want to see the happiest people on earth, just ride a Game Day Express bus. Well, maybe when they, not on the way home if we lose, but on the way there, they're very excited.
On behalf of the Las Vegas Raiders, thank you to the Clark County Board of Commissioners, the Regional Transportation Commission Board, and the entire team at the RTC for your invaluable partnership and for funding the Game Day Express. The Game Day Express is a fun, safe, and efficient way for fans to travel to and from Allegiant Stadium on game day for an incredible game day experience while also reducing traffic. Seeing the Game Day Express rolling up to the stadium full of excited fans, donning their silver and black is a sight to behold. We love the Game Day Express, wouldn't you agree Rusher? Go Game Day Express and go Raiders.
We are happy to be part of RTC Game Day Express.
RTC relationship has been really beneficial for Samstown. People really enjoy that, people come and use our restaurants before, they hit the bus, they come in and make bets in the sportsbook before they hit the bus, they gamble a little before they hit the bus. I mean, it's a really good relationship we have with RTC and Game Day Express.
With Game Day Express picking up alongside the sportsbook, guests come in that have never bet before or are curious about betting, and they ask us to help them with their bets. We help them with their bets, and they grab a drink at the bar and hang out before departure.
All of our customers have found this very economical, very fun, so you don't have to ever have to worry about parking, it's a real quick trip, you're going to have a good time, so make sure you take advantage of that.
I like to see our customers enjoying our property, and I hope to see them all come back this upcoming season.
To RTC Game Day Express for getting me safely to and from the games. Go Knights, go!
We're very excited to start services again.
Okay, through you Mr. Chairman, do you have a bus that comes out of the Bonneville Station?
That comes out of the Bonneville?
For the games, back and forth.
We don't, but the Bonneville Transit Center is still such a large connection, this is really intended, we look, when we work with the Raiders and the Golden Knights, we look at where the season ticket holders are, and then plan the routes accordingly, and that's, it's both season ticket holders for the Raiders and the Knights are very similar, and so it's, that's how the routes are planned.
So at this point, there's nothing for the general public, who would go to a game, a central locale, that we have public service buses for a fee, to get you there and keep your cars away?
Yeah Mayor, we're definitely serving the general public, what's, really the benefit, and one, another benefit of this not only is getting folks from the outline areas to leave their car at home?
Yes.
And get on a vehicle. If we were not providing Game Day Express, you would expect to see around Allegiant Stadium or T-Mobile Arena, an additional 1,500 to 2,000 cars. So it's, not only is, again, very, it's a one-stop ride in to see a sporting event for those, for the folks that have been identified as having a season ticket holders, but I think because it's connected, our transit routes are connected to the areas where we're serving the Game Day Express, it's an easy connection for all.
Good, thank you.
If you want to go from downtown, you can always take the deuce to...
That's correct, right to the game, that's right.
Good advice, thank you.
Yep, Mayor Harding.
So if a person doesn't drink and a person doesn't gamble, one can go to a place where other people drink and other people gamble, and get on the bus, and go down to the game?
Absolutely.
Yes!
Absolutely.
And it's all free?
Uh, no. No, actually, we charge...
Subsidized.
That's right, we charge, it's the same amount that you would, that you would, $2.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'll treat you.
Thank you.
And then finally, Mr. Chairman, just a brief overview of our transit ridership year-over-year, as you can see, our microtransit on-demand almost doubled year-over-year, and I will tell you that in the future, you know, funding, we have a funding issue that we need to solve for, but if, when we solve for that in the future, we would like to implement more on-demand services in and around the Las Vegas Valley. If you see the residential service continues to grow, we're not quite back to where we were pre-pandemic, but pretty close. And then the strip ridership, you know, that's, it's really, you can see June is always this, is, the summer months always we have less ridership, but it really depends again on the conventions at our town, the sporting events, music events, the construction, traffic impacts, and so we saw a decrease in ridership this June, so just to want to keep you updated. And then I'm going to invite Antoinette Bradock, she's our Senior Director of Paratransit Services, to speak to you on, we will be going out for a paratransit RFP, as we do every time we go out for a contract of this size, both fixed route and paratransit, we bring to you the process that we will use going forward, so Antoinette, take it away.
Thank you MJ, and good morning members of our board. For the record, my name is Antoinette Bradock, and I'm the Senior Director of RTC Paratransit and Specialized Services, and I'm here today to provide you with a report regarding the procurement for solicitation for our ADA paratransit services. This presentation will provide an overview of the structure that we will use for the procurement, including the proposed contract term as well as the evaluation criteria. Alrighty, so before issuing our RFP, we shared our scope of services with our private industry transportation companies. This is to allow them to weigh in on the services that are required under our paratransit contract. This is something that we have consistently done, it's a best practice for the industry. We did it about six years ago for our last paratransit contract, and we did it just as early as recently for the fixed route contract. When we put it out for their response, we received seven respondents with a total of 49 responses, and those responses included requests for information related to paratransit and fixed route data. Alrighty, so to talk a little bit about our contract term, our proposed contract term is for a total of seven years, which consists of five base, base years, and then two one-year renewal options. The success of a two-step evaluation process previously used on both the RTC paratransit and our fixed route procurement has proven to be a productive procurement approach, and staff proposes to utilize the same methodology. The step one evaluation will require proposals to, or excuse me, proposers to provide a proposal that is based off of technical qualifications only. Only the, the most advanced of the qualifiers will be moved on to the second step. And our second step accounts for the final score of step one, and then it also includes a tabletop exercise as well as interviews, and then the price proposals. The next slide will dig into a little bit of what both the step one and step two consists of. So our step one evaluation will consist of the management structure and key personnel, the startup plan and operational innovation, staffing and personnel, employee training, vehicle and maintenance equipment, and then finally, our safety and security management. And then the step two process is divided into two steps. The first step is worth 60% of this process, and it includes the carryover from the scores of step one, and it also consists of an interview with our key personnel and corporate staffing as well as the tabletop interview. And then the second part of that is 40%, and that is based off of the proposer's price proposal. And then finally, the, our evaluation team will be, it will be inclusive of both external and internal stakeholders for a paratransit service. And then our timeline, our timeline is to issue the RFP later this month in August, and then in March of 2025, we'd like to come back to you, our board, for our recommendations for the final contract, and then following that, the contract will commence in July of 2025. That concludes my comments, if you have any questions.
Thank you Antoinette, any questions? Thank you very much.
I have one.
Yes, Councilman.
What can we do to get the strip ridership up continually, and I would assume that a lot of those riders are employees? How do, how do you get the customers of the casinos to use a bus to go back and forth rather than a cab or Lyft or something like that?
So we, we do know that we have many employees that use the strip service as a connecting point, so a lot of them use, it's coming from Tropicana, Flamingo, Charleston, Cerrata, they connect it and they use the strip, some of them actually park, believe it or not, down at Town Square, park their car, get on the deuce and ride in. We, we reach out, we've got a program called Club Ride, so we work directly with every employer on the strip to encourage folks to do something other than get into a single occupant vehicle car. I think that the, again, we've noticed and we see this trend, it really depends on, on what is happening in the resort quarter, when there, for example, when there's the impact with F1, we saw, we saw a decrease in ridership. So it's, and in the summer months, sometimes it's very difficult to get from the hotel down to the, to the bus stop on the sidewalk, and so you'll find folks, instead of wanting to walk or stand in the heat, they'll, they will choose another option, but it's a matter of, you know, we'll continue to work with hotels and the Culinary Union and their employees to encourage folks to ride transit. Angela, anything you want to add?
We, I know MJ, we've, we've had some money from the legislature to look at a service expansion into parts of town, do you want to talk about that real quick?
We did, so thanks to the effort of Angela and the legislative team, we were able to receive $5 million, so $2.5 million this year and next year. We're using that money right now to, we found it's, from the survey with the Culinary Union, they really wanted more frequent service, and so that's something that we're looking into, we're implementing that in September.
All right, Councilman.
Yes, in regards to the presentation here, on issuing of course this RFP, I have to find, so one thing that always comes up is the level of satisfaction, of course, I think from our primary stakeholders, which is the public. How much is that going to be weighted, weighed into this evaluation? I'd like to know just things like, how much will safety, of course, of our, of our clients be weighed in, their satisfaction, and a big one is of course, if we can vet and check to see the satisfaction of the employees that represent, that will be representing the RTC right, how much will the rankings reflect, I think, satisfaction with employees who work for these companies as we weigh who's going to get this? I mean, it'd be good to get a really great price, but you know, I mean, if an operator comes in and it turns out they're doing a not so great job with our employees, we're going to be hearing from it right here. And I'd like to, I'd like to not hear from them, I'd like to hear that whoever gets this contract is really good with customer service, is also good with, I think, employee-wise customer services there as well. Maybe you can speak to that?
Councilman, I will. So you know, that's part of the, of the RFP process, step one is really looking at their staffing and personnel plan, their training plan, that's, that's a big part of it, how are they going, first of all, first and foremost, the general manager and that the team that's going to come in boots on the ground, do they have a record of working in a very positive manner with the teamsters of the ATU? Do they have a great track record of managing people? That's, that really, that's part of it, and that's a huge part of it, right? It's leadership that, that is part of the RFP process, which is why in step two, it's such, it's more than one tabletop exercise, and it is spending a lot of time with that management team, proposed management team, on how in fact they are going to cultivate an environment that is a positive one, and the staffing and personnel plan is a big part of that as well.
Also, one thing that'd be, I don't know if it's even legally feasible, but maybe this would be one for council. So, gosh, you know, I would like to think that whoever our operator is here in the future will do a fantastic job, knock our socks off, we will have vetted what they claim as to all these deliverables, you know, that will be really important in my mind. But will it be any mechanism to go ahead and put the brakes on if all of a sudden some other company comes in and swallows that fish and becomes the big fish? Because of course, you know, when that happens, we have essentially an entirely different operator who did not go through our vetting process, who did not go through our selection process. Is there any way to put any sort of language into this process that would take that into account and start the process over again? I know that would, that sounds like a really big deal, but something, I don't know, not that long ago happened like that, and I would like to make sure that in the future, people who are, who go and do, are this process and are sitting there in boardrooms will understand that we're in the, we are in the business delivering for our residents, and I don't think I'm going to put up with those shenanigans, just speaking for myself.
Yes, that's the answer.
That's a great answer!
First time in history, a lawyer had a one-word answer.
I, I, I'm amazed that that one-word answer even provoked you to, for a lawyer joke.
From another attorney.
From another lawyer, unbelievable.
Mr. Chair, could he repeat that?
Yeah. Mr. Gilbert, can you go over that again?
For everyone. So the, the good observation in the answer is, is in that, you know, we cannot stop the world from, companies gobbling each other up, but your point is well taken, and in these agreements, we will include language that essentially says that if there is going to be a transfer of the company, or if a company is going to be the subject of a purchase, that us RTC, as the ultimate purchaser of those services, has a voice in whether or not we will agree to still have that party provide such services. So that, that, that language will be in the agreement, and the obligations that are provided pursuant to that procurement process, they still have to be provided. Once you are purchased, you cannot kind of say, I'm no longer part of this, so we'll still have all of the contractual remedies that we would want to have. So the answer is yes.
Mr. Chairman, I am fully satisfied with that answer.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Councilman Shaw.
MJ, as we send out this RFP, are we looking to bid apples to apples? In other words, we already have a service area, we understand what it currently costs us, is that what we're going to request that they look at and bid to, or are we expanding our service area or contracting it in any way?
So the paratransit service area is dependent on where our fixed route services are, and we don't have any plans, nor the funding to expand fixed route, so as a result, we will not be expanding paratransit service areas. So they'll be looking at exactly what the paratransit service area looks like, as well as what we do for our seniors, what we do for our veterans, and what we do for the disabled communities, that, that's the focus.
Thank you. But just to clarify, so in the event that we expand or contract service, their contract is toggled up or down based on them?
That is correct, there is, there is a reopen in all of our contracts for things just like that.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Very good.
All right, and thank you, that concludes the CE report. The next item on the agenda is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Report from Director Tracy Larkin-Thomason.
Thank you, Director.
Good morning, everybody. So today I'm going to just go in, we're going to talk a little bit about the I-15 widening, which is going on... which is going on between Blue Diamond Road and Sloan Interchange. We have a number of closures coming up and current restrictions. But mainly at the St. Rose Parkway on-ramp to southbound I-15. And those are daily closures from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And southbound I-15 off-ramp to Star Avenue, August 5th to 9th. So that'll be closed, that will be ending soon. And that is, again, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And the southbound I-15 to Silverado Ranch Boulevard. The lane reduction is to three lanes. That'll go to early September, which really isn't that far away. It's amazing. Southbound I-15 between St. Rose Parkway and Sloan. And that'll start on August 11th. And that'll be lane reductions, basically one lane nightly from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., so overnights. Actually happy to see that widening happening. And I did want to bring this up. It's hard for anyone in Las Vegas not to know about the recent lithium battery fire that was on the I-15 on the night, the weekend of January 26th to 27th. I want to know that, one, how important are the roles of the Traffic Operations Center? So I really want to give a shout out to our guys here at FAST, who talk a lot with the San Bernardino Traffic Operations Center to keep as much information as possible flowing. Now, obviously, in a situation like this, it is hard to, you know, when it closes down the whole freeway and it's in another state, it's hard for us to actually alter a lot of things. But we did call since then. We have worked, we reached out to California after this and have talked to them. We're asking for a debrief on their system. I am meeting with the Secretary of Transportation from California and the Caltrans director to go over it and to see what we can do better in the future as far as coordination. We've also reached out to our DC connections and asking for if there's other federal funding or programs that could provide resources to help the transportation network better serve emergency operations. You know, this isn't a build-out or anything, but there are things that we can do to smooth and maybe get more information out to the people on the roadway so that they have more informed decisions they make, they can make. And also looking at how we can advance, develop, or reinforce training for emergency operations that are going to address batteries and other advanced tech freight that's becoming more and more common on our freeway. You know, this one was a lithium fire. It was not well-known to some of the emergency response people there on the actual way to take care of it. So if there's better ways that we can do to actually make sure that all of our response teams know what they need to do. And then we're also, you know, looking, exploring other ways of, can we reach out to other national organizations, state ones too, but where we can start to leverage some of their dollars with our dollars? So I'm talking Department of Defense, Department of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, FEMA, on that. Other programs, training, operations enhancements, communication enhancements that we can do. So I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, the Las Vegas area, we've had the TIM Coalition, the Traffic Incident Management for many, many years. There's a lot of cooperation about looking how that we can now put it on steroids and start working across the state borders. I have been in contact also with Utah and Arizona as we look at the entire I-15 corridor and I-11. Because as everyone here knows, those are our critical pathways in and out. Also, the Tropicana project. We have just completed Part Pavathon, Part One. There'll be another one coming up. But there was, I did want to make this out there. Pavathon, we had planned on paving considerably more during that closure than was accomplished. But that the closure was also necessary in order to hang the girders for the bridges on there and to put in the active traffic management signs. So the closure was necessary. We will have to come back and do some additional closure for the remaining asphalt pavement that goes on top. There was a problem with the lab, so it was a very unexpected, that night, supply chain shortage. But it is moving forward. And like I said, the girders are up, and that is the critical path for us, so one of the most important parts. And then yesterday, we had the opening of the I-15 and the US-95 Charleston ribbon cutting. It was, it was very nice. And it was at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, so not too hot. Nice little breeze going, ruined my hair for the day. But I also want to point out, when we do this, that we cannot accomplish these type of projects without our partners. And in this one, the City of Las Vegas and Clark County were very high-profile partners in this. They conducted the planning study. I said Jeff Galambos, the project manager for the City of Las Vegas. He also played an integral role in the planning of this. So as you know, on one side, it's Clark County. On the other side, it's the City of Las Vegas. And in the middle is NDOT. So three-way partnership, but it was very successful, and it looks great. So as most people said, we all drove to do the opening. And we were all surprised we could actually freely turn left and right and go through, so. And then lastly, just on the same thing with that same interchange, it won the NDOT Gold Excellence in Partnering Award. The partnering program is something that NDOT has now done for about, a little over, about 20 years. And it's something we have found that where the contractor and the construction team, along with NDOT, get together on a regular schedule just to identify projects and talk through issues, not identify projects, I'm sorry, identify the issues, talk through the path forward on it. And over the years, it has very successfully kept projects on track and saved a considerable amount of money in arbitration. That's it. That concludes it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Councilman.
So the freeway was closed northbound for almost two full days, but southbound kept going? Is that true?
I'm sorry, sir. I just didn't hear it.
It said I-15 northbound was closed for 46 hours.
That is true.
Southbound stayed open?
Southbound was closed for a brief period of time and then was reopened. The bus that was carrying six lithium batteries overturned. It was on the northbound lane, and it was on fire. So that was why northbound was closed. It was, the lithium batteries are extremely heavy, and they had to get equipment there so they could even drag it to the side of the road. And then they had to get heavy equipment to even drag it farther, while they determined what they were going to do with it.
I know this was in another state, but was there any way they could have routed the northbound traffic to one of the lanes on the southbound and had two one-way lanes going?
That was something that was considered, and it was something that I asked about when I was in contact with the Caltrans director. I asked if they could do it. And it just said that the crossovers were unstable in the areas they were. I don't know the geography, the topography there well enough to say why there. And I do know, of course, which has often been pointed out, with the alternate routes, we were in touch with Arizona DOT, too, as they came over US-40 and over a lot of the resources, which is the problem with, we don't have much redundancy in the system. You put them on the other roads, and they start to run out of gas and other resources that people need along the way.
Other comments, questions?
I had a question. With regards to the south I-15 project, does any of that work affect at all what Brightline will be doing in the future? Or is it preparatory for?
I heard the last part. I'm sorry. Apparently, I'm not.
For the south I-15 project down to Sloan Road, does any of that work for the widening have any effect on what Brightline will be doing in the future? Or is it preparatory for it?
We have some widening on the Nevada side. I cannot speak for the California side, but I do not believe, they have some crossings, but I do not believe they have widening.
Okay, and then? In terms of F1 for both the Trop project and for the widening project on 15, is there a plan for, during race week, for making sure that there is as few disruptions as possible?
Is F1? I mean, our goal is not to be in the news at all. And we, so, after, I mean, Tropicana will still be up. But after going through it last year, we will be in a better position to transfer the traffic as necessary.
Great. Mayor, do you have a question?
Yes, no, I was more in comment to your question about Brightline. The $3 billion that's been given by the administration to move that private train between here and Victorville ultimately is going to cost.
Not to Victorville. It goes all the way to Tarantia Cucamonga.
It's going to go on to, yes, further in. It's probably short another $9 billion. The hope has been, is I've actually put paperwork in the hands of every president, President Obama, President Trump, and President Biden, was to help Nevada, help California do their side of the state line, to move cargo, everything into the belly of this country. Of course, it benefits us as well because our tourists can come. But the reality is, this is for here and now and not a 10-year out. But that has been 13 years of this, and we see the results. There's nothing. And I find it absolutely irresponsible for anybody caught between state line and Barstow. There is no shoulder to pull off into. And when you have such a tragic accident happening, the people with shoulder, elderly people, are having a heart attack unless there's a helicopter to say nothing of the extraordinary heat that we're all suffering from. And you are sitting in a car for 24 hours with your motor having to be turned off, your battery probably having died. I mean, this is almost at emergency stage in my mind and in what I believe, and I can believe, as much as you've been trying and talking to Caltrans, that they will not move in California, nor from the federal government, looking at the cargo that's out there and move that, everything, everything speaks to the California side. Nevada really has been doing well. And as you know, Brightline, well-intentioned, going to be wonderful fun, and ability to have parties on trains and things. This is a different level, in my opinion. And I just, I thank you particularly for going after Caltrans. I'm sort of running out of gas here after 13 years of trying and nothing happening. And especially with Secretary Budacek putting materials in his hands as well to get that federal funding into California. Not to us, we're fine, but into California, make the move. I think this is critical. Anything that anybody can say, just drive that one time, and you'll see, there's no pullout. So I had to say it. Sorry. It's your meeting.
Don't apologize. And I would just say to that, to make lemonade out of the lemons of the battery fire, I think it would be really helpful in your discussions with Caltrans to make sure that they, or we, or collectively have a true economic impact of what the cost of shutting down the traffic for that period of time on shipping, on tourism, et cetera. Because we can use that financial analysis of what it costs just for, you know, two days of shutdown to justify additional federal funds to make sure that we don't have that happen as often.
Any other comments or questions? Very good. MJ.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to approve your consent agenda. It consists of items five through 34. It can be taken one motion.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
May I approve?
Here's a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item is to receive information from our legal counsel. There are no items to discuss, so we can move on to the last agenda item, which is to conduct a public comment period.
All right, good. And I apologize, I forgot to note for this meeting that Commissioner Sagerlum is excused from today's meeting. All right, this is the second time set aside for a public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regards to any matters before the Regional Transportation Commission, please step forward to the microphone, state your names, by your last name for the record. And please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good morning. I'm Stanley Smalls, last name SMA-LS. I represent the ATU International. I'm coming here to speak on behalf of the Silver State workers. I've been here several times, and it's actually quite frustrating at this time. We could sit back and say, we don't know what's going on. Or we could pretend like we don't know what's going on. Even while watching the video, me and my colleague was talking now on how many times I've been here and I watch I give these crystal balls out to people, crystal buses out to people. And we brag about how clean the buses are and stuff like that. So let me be very clear. Those people are true heroes. They're on their hands and knees cleaning 40-to-60-foot buses for $12 an hour. And we can't pretend that we don't know this is going on. They're dragging big gallons of garbage cans full with water across a parking lot. This is happening on your property. We can't pretend, and I will no longer keep this a secret. You guys have a choice to get involved and address it, or I could go public with it with all the pictures I have. It's disgusting over there. I sent the email to one of the managers asking, one night it was 106 degrees. And when you have about 100 buses still going with the engine going, that's probably 115, 120. And I'm asking, how are you keeping these people cool and everything? Their attorney literally said, he doesn't care how many ULPs I file. He refused to answer me. That's crazy. Your personal feelings of me have nothing to do with addressing inhumane conditions on a RTC property. I don't care who the employer is or the contractor is. Long and behold, this is a RTC property. And when the messy news media get a hold of it, they're not going to really say Silver State. It's going to say RTC. You have people cleaning buses, cleaning vomit, cleaning all types of matter with no equipment, hands and knees. This is literally happening. I ask you guys, take a trip out there. Pop up out there, you will see it. Folks are literally scared to talk to their union representative because every time they talk to their union representative, they're being fired for nothing, just for talking to their union representative. This has to stop. And, you know, like I said, our folks in DC, they're making it clear. These folks would not be taken advantage of anymore. These folks would not be bullied by anybody. We just had a brief conversation with the team from TransDev. Some of their staff are actually getting involved in bullying these people as well. This has to stop. And if it doesn't stop, we will just start exposing inhumane behavior. $12 an hour? I don't think anybody would let their child or their grandchild take a summer youth job today for $12 an hour. These people are making less than Walmart, Walmart and McDonald workers. I encourage all you guys, take a trip out there. Those guys are the real heroes, for $12 an hour cleaning your buses.
Good morning. My name is Ishma Rivera, last name R-I-V-E-R-A. I also represent the ATU International. And I stand here before you as a former employee. I don't work here, but I drove a bus for 27 years. So I can tell this body and everybody else here what it takes to drive a bus. I drove from New York to Florida, all throughout the states. I was assigned here with my colleague to work here, and I've seen the property. As we know, it's no surprise, I am a Latino person, okay? And it is disgusting to see how our brothers and sisters are treated, okay? I don't care who gets the contract, but you have a responsibility to make sure that, you know, I like this sign that you have, integrity, service, and all that togetherness stuff. So let's show it. Let's show some respect to those individuals that actually cleaned the buses, all right? I've seen all these videos, and I commend, you know, congratulations to everyone who got that crystal bus. That's great, you know, public relations, everybody's taking these pictures. But I haven't heard one person here acknowledge those poor individuals, okay? I got a call a couple nights ago about people signing paperwork at 11 o'clock at night. I answer my phone because these people rely on us, okay? So I asked this body, we're not here to negotiate with this body, but you're an elected official. Your constituents rely on you. So do the working people, okay? And I stand here and I just say WTF? Where's the fairness to all these people? That's all we're looking for. We're not here to cause chaos, but if we have to, we will. And we're not here to threaten anybody, so please don't take that in any way, shape, or form. We want fairness. They clean the buses. We can't even give them bottled water or even the five-gallon water. I was at BTC the other day, and I see a young lady giving out free bottles of water to everybody. But we can't get a clean bottle, fresh water, to these employees. Think about it. we can't get a clean bottle, fresh water to these employees. Think about it. Go out there one evening, 10 o'clock at night, and you'll see those conditions. It's disgusting. And the Brother Baron, you made some great comments about giving people the, you know, what's the employee satisfaction, all right? How satisfied are they? Well, ask the same question to those employees at Silver State. How satisfied are they with Silver State? And that should answer your question. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. I'm Carolyn Higgins, ATU. And I'd like to piggyback on the two brothers that were just speaking. Yes, we need help for our silver, our silver service employees. But Commissioner Barron, I'd like to thank you for really talking up for employees in the beginning of the RFP during the bidding process. Right now, we at TransDev, at the property at Simmons, currently had MB Transportation. And at this time, they still owe us money, vacation accrual. So when you go through that process, take it all the way to the end. Do not let a company walk out or leave the property without taking care of their employees. We're in arbitration right now, and we demand to have the accrued six-month vacation money handed to us. That's a lot of money, because it was a great deal of employees over there. And we want interest. Thank you. Have a good day.
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close, oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Derek Bruin. I'm with TransDev. I've been involved in the project for about three months now, so still getting my feet wet. I appreciate what the folks are saying about the Silver State relationship. Obviously, we have a contract with Silver State. Silver State provides the services here. I met with the union president yesterday. We'll follow up with it. Their next negotiation, I believe, is in September. But just recently, I expedited, expedited the negotiations with the Teamsters on a completely separate issue. So I'll step in and try to see if I can expedite some of the negotiating piece, so we're not waiting. So that was my last comment.
Thank you. Anyone else would you provide public comment? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the second public comment period, and we are adjourned. Thank you.